I know you don't care, right?
Yeah.
Really don't know.
Yeah.
I am a glad allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Manly Asigning Board for February 12, 2024. Uh, we are on hybrid meeting, so we're both live and online. Um, I also want to make an announcement. We had a late change to our agenda this evening. So if anybody is here regarding the Fayetteville vet on the um agenda, that will not be on our agenda this evening after all. Um, okay, so the first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our meeting on January 8, 2024.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The minutes are approved for January 8, 2024. All right, the next item on our agenda is Clear Path for Veterans at 1223 Salt Springs Road in Chittango. Um, we are here for the site plan and special use permit um for their puppy developmental center, dog kennel um for a possible decision tonight. It's um at tax map number 091 point dash 03 dash 40.2. So I don't know if the applicant would like to say anything before we go or if you have anything to add, what we've already heard.
Uh, Vincent Ryan, Chuff and Your Premier Associates, speaking on behalf of Clear Path for Veterans. Uh, just want to get on the record uh that as of December 19th, three of the board members did visit the property and expect it. Uh, and then after that meeting, there was three letters submitted uh by Clear Path, two vets, uh and the director of the K-9 program, uh Ryan Quintero, uh his support project, uh those should be on file. Uh, other than that, we have no further updates. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, yeah, so we've had the public hearing and three of us did visit the site. Um, and we've heard uh from everyone, we did seeker at our last meeting. Um, and so I'd like to put it up for discussion for the board. Um, before we, we can also, uh, we need to go and do the special permit criteria, which Jamie will lead us through. Um, but if anybody on the board has any comments or anything before we...
I was, I was one of the board members that went to, um, Valerie, you went to.
Yeah.
I have a little bit of a problem that it's a house that is being treated as a kennel. But there were no smells, the dogs seem to be treated fairly and properly. Um, they do not do training in there, they do it down at the main facility. Um, so that, I think. The only thing I'd like to add, and and I know that when we were there, we were told that the dogs went home every night with somebody. And in the special use permit, I'd like it to be something added, because I wrote, let's wrote real quick, Jamie.
Right, well, we'll, we'll go through it.
Okay.
For discussion.
All right.
Discussion item.
And the only other thing is, we were told that the house was owned by Clear Path for Veterans, Inc. I would like some verification of that, because it sits on Clear Path at Skyridge LLC land. And I was just, I, I, I don't know who owns it. That's what we were told, and I'd like a clarification of that.
Vince, did you want to clarify? But from what I, I understand, the property is owned by Clear Path.
By Skyridge LLC.
By Skyridge LLC, so.
Correct.
Okay.
And there is a use agreement by Clear Path for Veterans.
Like a lease. Like a lease, okay.
I, you said a use agreement?
Uh, the 50-year term lease for, for the property.
Okay, so, but who owns the actual house?
I know.
Clear. Skyridge, yeah.
Clear Path for Veterans paid for it, owned it.
No, no.
And so they have a name.
Skyridge.
The Skyridge.
Okay, Skyridge.
The land. Yeah.
Okay, that's not what we were told those before. Okay, and there's a 50-year lease place for not only that house, but also the main facility. Everything in Madison County, Anadog County. Who are the authorized signers of that agreement?
Which, which you gave me.
How's this got age?
You've got an agreement between um Clear Path at Skyridge LLC and Clear Path for Veterans, Inc. Who are the signers or authorized signers for that agreement?
So we are turning, submitting that to Jamie, so Melissa, I'm came with my sister, and I'm Melissa Spicer. We're the members of the LLC.
Okay.
And we sign that, and then the CEO of Clear Path for Veterans signed it on behalf of Clear Path. But the lease has to be renewed annually and approved by the Board of Directors.
Of?
Clear Path for Veterans. There's no Board of Directors for Clear Path at Skyridge. It's just an LLC with two members, with my sister and myself.
Okay, it's the LLC.
As the LLC.
And the Inc. has awarded directors that gives correction to the.
Correct. They have fiduciary oversight of all the financial engagements with Clear Path for Veterans.
And the reason I'm asking these questions is because we've been told it's a 50-year lease, but if the authorized signers are the same people, you could tear that up tomorrow.
It's not. The, the, the landlord's sign it in agreement with the representative of Clear Path for Veterans.
And they rented the entire 150 acres or whatever.
Entire upper portion, which includes the 77 acres, the house and the main building.
And in Madison County, the same thing?
Madison County, both sides, yes. On that upper portion. They do not lease anything in the lower portion. And that they do not lease anything in the lower portion.
In Madison County?
Both, both the upper and the lower parcels have parcels in both Madison and Anadog.
That is a separate parcel though. The lower, the lower parcel is, is separate and it's part of the.
What is the lower parcel?
There's another parcel owned by uh Clear Path at Skyridge. It's completely separate from.
It's where the ridges.
For the ridges.
Where the ridges, okay, that's separate, that's on.
My sister's, that is my sister's.
Got it.
My sister leases that on both that and Skyridge.
Okay.
Clear Path for Veterans, Inc. leases the upper portion.
Okay, thank you. We clarified that, Lord, thank you.
Yeah, and like Rich mentioned, myself and Erin, we also visited and uh everything, to reiterate what Rich said, is very well taken care of. The dogs were very, very well behaved. Um, and they start there, correct me if I'm wrong, at 18 months coming?
No, they come in, well, they come back for, because of drainage, so 18 months.
At 18 months, yeah. So um they're in, and then in, in between 18 months and it's been a while.
About two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
So.
Before they have to be placed before, no longer than three months.
Yes, okay. But they were all, yeah, very well behaved. Like when we came in the door, they did strangers. Three different, we were, came in three separate times and they even.
No.
Not even the doorbell.
Finally got to see the doorbell or anything, so.
I have a question. So I thought at one point they said that the little dogs spent the night there.
Yes, correct.
And they don't spend the weekend there.
They don't, so do they, so they, they're there, some of them are there overnight by themselves or somebody's.
So, so, yes, they stay there. We have uh staff on site on 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
And then at night, they go home with somebody or they're there?
No, they stay overnight on 8:00, 8:00 PM at 6:00.
So they're by themselves over there?
Yeah, with all the cameras and all the surveillance that we have in house.
This is one of the things I want to talk about, want to get the special use permit.
Okay. Anything else before we go through?
Okay. So the, the board needs to review the special permit criterion, section 155 dash 27 of the code. And the, the questions, the criterion are in there, and we'll go through those. The first question, will the project have an adverse effect on adjacent lands, the immediate neighborhood, or on the character of the community? And in answering this question, the board has to ask, is, in this plan, is the community protected from traffic congestion and conflicts, flooding, and excessive soil erosion, unnecessary noise, lighting, and odors, wasteful energy use, and other forms of pollution? So that's the first discussion item. And.
That's a yes.
Yeah, so.
They're protected, yeah.
They're protected, so um some of the concerns were, were the proper removal of dog waste. Um, and I think that is, someone brought that up at some point, but then it doesn't seem to be an issue?
It, it seems that they're being.
Yeah.
Okay.
The trash they were carrying got taken it up.
Um.
And then there was the concern, concern of the odors, which was not in connection with this.
Right.
It's not, this is not the source of any.
If there is an odor, it is not.
My experience, it's a subject issue going on in the main building.
Mm-hmm. Which is not even in this.
This is.
District.
Part of the product, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, another thing, talking about um unnecessary noise, so there had, there was a concern raised about that. And I think our engineer had um sent a letter.
Mm-hmm.
Doug, do you want to kind of paraphrase what your, your findings were in that respect?
Sure, we talked about that um requirements for dog kennels and special use permits. And it was pretty clear in the uh Town Manly's Code that um there are, there are prohibitive noises, there are decibel limits. Um, there are specifics as to um noise disturbances for dogs. So in our opinion, um, it looked like it was most likely allowable use for the special use permit. And um if you were to move forward, that this would be an enforcement issue, not necessarily uh, you know, restriction. Restrictions are in the code, so you know, if you were to move forward, and it wasn't the point, it would be pretty clear that the code officer or the police or whoever, the S P, even if the S P C A might, might be the ones who would come out and monitor for those type of complaints.
So there was some discussion about further study, and does this board determine as to whether or not a further noise study or anything would be required?
I don't feel necessary.
Are you ready?
Yeah, after, after visiting and then after hearing from what Doug said, from the engineer, so.
The next question is, does this plan protect the community from inappropriate design and other matters of scenic and aesthetic significance?
No.
No, not. Rich does not.
So it's really not really something you can see, right, from, from, removed in any significant way or.
Right.
Property lines.
I think the fact that it's a house is favorable in this.
Yeah. It blends in.
Mm-hmm. Does the plan ensure that the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it's proposed?
Yep.
So it's a permitted use in the zoning district. Um, when you look at whether it's going to be in harmony with the orderly development, um, you can put conditions on that that will make it appropriate. So is that something that we want to discuss?
Well, I think on the term that you've got some things that maybe that's what we just discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Have at it.
Yeah.
Is that what we can discuss?
So yeah, so the special.
Is this the time?
This is the time. The special permit will be, would be in effect for seven years, so it would be, we looked at at least at a minimum every seven years.
My, my biggest problem, well, I got two problems. It's a house. And the setting of a precedent in the Town Manly is to have kennels in houses in the areas owned anywhere bothers me a little bit. But what bothers me more is that it's just my opinion that if dogs are going to be there overnight on weekends or whatever, there should be eight person in the house to take care of those dogs for whatever the case may be. And I know they say they have cameras, which is great. And they also, I think, explained to us that somebody lives over on Route 173, he sent a turnpike that's a few miles away. But it could be 10 or 15 minutes in the middle of the night if something happened for that person to get dressed, get in the car, and get to the facility. So I'm just of the belief that there's going to be dogs in that facility overnight if somebody's there. I'm one vote, but that's my opinion.
That was my concern also, how they're there overnight by themselves. So I, I just wonder if the, our trainer wants to address that question.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, it seems.
Yeah, so I'm Mariana Rossoni, I'm the director of the K-9 program. Um, I hear your concern, and as when you came to have your inspection, we talked about our procedures. We are an organization accredited by Assistance Dog International, which is the highest standard of the service dog industry at the moment at worldwide. Um, we are also go by audited inspections from the wounded warriors and the Defense, the, the Department of Defense. Um, um, grant. And based on those experts, there are the experts for animal use, animal welfare, where the highest standards of health and behavior of our dogs. We have clearances for leaving our dogs from 8 o'clock to 6 o'clock in the morning. Uh, I have a PhD in animal science, I have years of um experience with animal behavior, and there's nothing that can tell me that, that it's not allowed to leave a dog overnight from 8 o'clock to 6:00 AM. So I understand your concern, but our surveillance is sufficient for any emergencies. Uh, we do have staff that lives really close, and that could uh be in any other facility. You have that clinics that are going to leave the dogs overnight and come back in the morning and check the dog in the morning. It's a standard practice.
Who surveils the cameras?
So actually, right now, we have uh five staff members that have access to the, the system. And if anything goes off, we all get the notification. So it's a pretty well-established risk management system.
How far from the facility are they?
The cameras?
The people, the, their surveillance people.
What's your six minutes? Six minutes.
Six minutes?
No.
Do you ever take a vacation?
No, not really.
You're never sick, you never.
Yeah, that is one of our issues, but uh, but, but we have other staff members that are also close for us, so once one of us is out of town, we, we can create the plan.
Have you ever had a time where, I don't know if it's an alarm or a camera beeping or something that happens in the house? Has there been a case where that's happened in the middle of the night?
Yeah.
And what's happened after that?
We check the camera and see if the dog is safe and realize that it's just an extra noise.
Okay, and there's never been wow, any type of damage to an animal or the structure of the facility?
No, we haven't never had any damage. We had uh the noise, and then we address the noise by if we need a dog that, we look at their behavior, if they need modifications, we can create modifications. Sometimes it's pulling that dog out of the facility and going to a foster home at night, we've done that door. Or in, pretty much in our situation, if a dog is causing noise, then they're not going to be in our program. We're going to have to place them in a new family or a different career or a different process, because that dog is not suited for this stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, tell me your name again.
Mariana Rossoni.
Mariana, thank you. Um, can you repeat again, are you accredited?
By Assistance Dog International. Assistance Dog International is a coalition of service, uh guide dogs, it's service dog industry uh schools, they call them schools. Uh, started about 1989, and um it's uh, it was an effort to create the higher standards for the industry as a general. So we have from the, the, the standards for the dog and how the dog is being treated, trained, uh, what health there is if they need, all the way to how our clients are also, and our volunteers are treated. So we, by having that accreditation, it tells that we are reaching the maximum of what I consider the maximum of higher standards for service dog.
Yeah, I think that's a good number too, it's not just a dog, huh?
Mm-hmm.
These dogs are unique and have, and then they're unique in that they've got this extra accreditation as opposed to no accreditation.
Well, when I look at it, having visited the facility um and living here, I um, you know, being near the area frequently, um, I was pleasantly surprised to see how organized and, and well um run everything was, including the facility in the main building. Um, a couple of questions that I had were um with regard to the monitoring. Um, it's easy to think, oh, wow, they're there overnight and nobody's there, you know? And that's a little bit frightening to have that as a burden of ours to be, you know, kind of influencing. And I think not, being an expert in that field, I have personally had to kind of look to other cases like this where this is done, this is done in this field regularly. Um, that's offices, you know, things like that. They have animals that stay overnight quite often too, and those animals are sick. You know, they're there for a reason. Um, and I remember asking, um, you know, at the time, how the system worked, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it was a certain decibel level within the house triggers the the alerts for the off-site monitoring.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, they can get a sense of what's going on, you know, with that. And I remember um asking if it would be possible to have, you know, how that all would work, the power goes out and stuff. And there was discussion of possibly having a generator.
Yeah, we were in discussion of, of putting a generator.
So, you know, not understanding fully how those systems get set up, you know, even the power would go out and then the generator would kick on. It could still trigger an alarm, but that might let people know to come down and, and then check on things. And then, do you have a um, with the smoke alarm systems, do you have that wired in where if one of those went off, you'd know? Or would you just hear the beeping and, you know, do you have a plan for the smoking or for the cameras? I guess, are they tied? Or would your camera pick up the sound if the smoke alarm went off?
Yes.
And so it could, okay, I have a picture going on. Um, other than that, that was really it, and that I was going to encourage you to get a, see if you get a generator. I think somebody talked about grant writing and all that.
Yes.
See if I could have.
I do have one other question. The, the county came back on both the site plan and the uh special use permit that Anadog County Health Department had reviewed the septic system to make sure it was adequate for the use. They needed an issue of permit or something. Has that been received?
Uh, they are, uh, their comments were any existing proposed septic system is probably prior to our expedition of municipal approval and to be sent to the, the health department. Uh, we have been in discussion with them, there has not been a formal submission. Uh, we have put together a septic report uh that can be submitted uh per their request and sent up to, to the Department of Health.
But you get that done yet?
We, we've talked about it, but we haven't gotten it. So I didn't formally submit it.
I, I think that's an important piece to do.
Yeah.
The building is on its own side. The building is on its own septic separate from the rest of the facility. And as you, I mean, obviously the overall facility, uh, and the comments that have come up, they are worth addressing those issues, uh, which is why we've opened discussions with Department of Health.
It was properly permitted when it was built.
Yes.
As the residents.
Is that two bedroom house?
The septic tank is not related to, the septic is on the, on the Madison County.
They're separate. The house has a separate system.
And when you, when you came and visited us, we had this discussion about our waste, that our waste does not go into the septic tank for the dogs. And, uh, they're not trained to, they're, they don't, they don't eliminate, they don't defecate in their kennels. Right? They're trained to go outside and do it. They start their training when they're eight weeks old.
Right.
So we collect all the poop and they urinate outside, so there's no uh, um fecal matter or urine going as well, or sewage or.
Okay, then, I understand that, you've discussed that list before, but I guess I'm just saying, Anadog County planning says you've got to get the Board of Health to say everything's fine with the septic system.
Is that any kind of a special use permit?
Yes.
Some claimants, but.
We're looking at the entire property as opposed to obviously the septic.
So it's a normal course of action.
Yeah, typically, uh.
Right.
Just want to make sure we get it.
Well, we can make that condition. I, I was listening to, to what everyone was discussing about the um, the dogs and I the overnight, and I, I was just jotting some things down. Um, feel free to chime in. Um, overnight stay of dogs from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM is permitted indoors only without a human present in the house. So as long as the facility remains accredited by Assistance.
Bless you.
Assistance Dog International, did I say that right? Um, these are service dogs. Um, external um off-site electronic monitoring when a human is not present must be in place. Does that sound good?
That does sound good.
But the, maybe I'm wrong. The dogs that are in the house are not service dogs yet because they haven't been trained.
No, they're service dogs and training, which in New York State, they have the same right as a service dog.
Okay, pardon.
I'll break that down, service dogs in training. Okay. In, in other words, to justify why we have this condition here, but not for, you know, somebody else, it, it, I think is, is critical.
And, and should we, in the special use permit, give them a deadline for getting the approval from the Board of Health for the septic system?
Well, it's, it would be a condition of the, of the.
Yeah, but it falls through the cracks. I mean, it, it can never be done.
What do you think that's?
Uh, I would prefer not a deadline, as anyone knows, working with Department of Health will come back with comments, which may, you know, they, there's they're looking at this as, as a whole site situation. I mean, they have two septic fields, three septic fields on the site, and each one has its own.
But there's several courses.
So.
They are, but we have lines that cross, I mean, we have lines that cross from one caddy to the other. So I, I mean, I just urge you to get to a deadline on this thing.
Well. Yeah, I mean, like if, if we, we said three months, right, and then you don't have it in three months, then you can tell us why? Or six months, something like that. I mean, I understood.
That's fine to just, to stay on top of us, that's fine. I mean, we're, we're in talks with them now. It's just a component of, you know, knowing the issues that are out there. This isn't like a, we can go out there and fix it tomorrow situation. Because I know that the county is probably going to come back with recommendations, and it's not like we can leave the recommendations. It's going to be grant writing, and that's the habit for, you know, for us to, to service.
Wait a minute, so because this house is not on a separate tax map lot than the main buildings, it's all tied together with the.
To, to the, to the county, it's the health department, yeah.
Okay, so.
I mean, these septic fields have to be inserted, this is far from each other, we have to confirm all that with the health department, so they look, look at it holistically.
Right.
So we have to make sure.
Then you're trying to go between the two counties.
Yep.
As well.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I consider it would be kind of a nightmare.
It has.
Sorry, the health department. I shouldn't have said that, I'm sorry. Um.
Why would we put a lot longer?
Why would we issue, I mean, I don't, I would hate to, I don't know the history of how these things go, but I know we don't like to do conditions.
Well, we, we do.
We can, we can.
Prove it when they want it.
When they get it, right.
Yeah. Prove it when they get it.
Explain to me, I'm really confused.
Or we can, or we can overturn the.
It's a question.
Or we can overturn the request of the county by a majority plus one vote. I just said, I'm just.
No, well, I think there are, I think that part of what's coming up is that there are, there might be issues with the main building having septic. Working on.
We are working on.
The, the, the main building has septic issues, we are addressing this.
Yeah, so.
But that's in Madison County. We're talking about.
It.
No.
It's a residential house.
No, it's not.
It doesn't, it, it ties together with what's going on in Anadog County as well, because we have to contact both health departments.
So the septic field for the main building is in Anadog County?
That one is in Madison County, the septic field.
But the lots cross, it's a, it's a tax map, a mess.
One of them is tied, one in Anadog is tied to one in Madison. So we, Madison refers to Anadog, we may approve the septic. In this case, we have a small repair on the Madison County side, and they are going to require that they're going to defer to Anadog to approve anything that we do, and this is going in with it.
Yeah.
So the leach field for the house.
Is in Anadog County.
Okay.
Correct.
And part of the main buildings is in Anadog County. And that's because, because they're all on one plan, and the county is looking at them as one parcel.
Oh, because it's on the parcel, right?
It's on the same parcel. Even though they're far away from each other, they're not related.
Now we understand.
So it's on tie-off.
Now I understand.
So I would hate to see this tie-off.
Yeah, I don't think we need to tie the special permit up. We can do, I think if we do somewhere in the middle, so if we do six months for the county.
I mean, as long as there's an extension period.
Yeah.
Well, let's put it this way, we would just say it's six months, and then if you're in 5.5 months, you got to come down and talk to us about it.
Yeah, and there's still a real area, and so it's, it's, it's all the time where people, you know, quote unquote, I've noticed that their septics have a problem. And then, like Vincent's saying, I mean, the applicant just.
And then like Vincent's saying, I mean, the applicant just works with the agency to make it happen because. The only thing the septic can do is the house and you get feces. It has nothing to do with the dog kennel.
Right, yeah.
Right? And this happens all the time and we get them all the time in Memphis, right? We just get a notice. From the health department that says, you know, Vincent reached out to us, they made modifications and everything's fine. And we stick it, we stick it in the building permit file.
So if we give them a special permit and say, listen, check back in with us in six months, tell us it's okay, that should seem like a good option.
Yeah, I would think if, if he, you know, if he doesn't address something, then they're going to come, they're going to say, we can't use the house anymore, right? It's nothing to do with the dogs. I mean, it's just.
Dogs could still work.
I'm going to be bluntly honest with you. That is, this thing's been operating for at least a year, maybe two years without a permit. And now we're going to rely on the owner that's been operating, and I'll say illegally, to, to get this permit in six months as a condition of the approval. Why don't we, Aaron had mentioned it two minutes ago. Why don't we wait till they get the permit? They get the approval, then we approve it.
What would happen, I mean, we, I think we have, we have to look forward with a special permit because they're operating.
Well, that's another question. Why are they operating if they don't have a special permit?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it seems like the reason I asked that.
I'm not saying we're going to approve it. We have to, we have to look forward with a decision.
I'm not suggesting that anything changes with what they're doing, cause I don't have a problem with what they're doing. But I don't know what the mechanism of follow-up on these things is.
It, well, Lisa has, it, there's conditions and she, and she has it there. And then it's like. Like every special permit has conditions and, or timeframes. And it's always like, okay, they gotta come. They didn't tell us what's going on.
So Lisa's adding a task to her list.
Sure.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how it works.
No, she is the one.
She does contact me. I can attest to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, we could do the septic, but also. Do the generator too as a condition. So then six months for, for the overnight concern with power going out. Is that feasible?
It, that's.
Generator, six months, generator. I know no one wants to get it done more than you.
More than me too. It's, it, going back what Vince said, it's all about grant writing for us.
Yeah.
I mean, I have big of a concern in terms of the generator. I mean, again, we're talking about, are you, is this something you specify in a veterinary facility to be to have a generator? I mean.
I don't, I don't think it's required. It was more of a suggestion and it might make it easier for them to get one.
I would prefer a suggestion. I mean, they're, they're looking at it. I mean, I know that doesn't mean much in this situation, but they are looking at it.
Well, I have thought that.
But that's the situation.
And I don't know if it's accurate or not, that it might be easier for them to get one if, if we're recommended by the board as part of their special use permit. No. Really? You know how long?
Really, yeah, I know. Sometimes you've got some.
People to submit, but, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not as concerned with the generator personally. I just thought everybody else was very concerned about the overnight.
No, that would be good.
I don't think it needs to be in there as a requirement.
I don't think the planning board should be in a position of running companies.
Yeah.
I think you've got enough problems with running your company. I don't think we should be telling you what you need and so forth. Other than to fulfill the terms of the code as far as it requires you to do certain things in order to get the special use permit. That's pretty straightforward. Now, the fact that we're six months or a year or two years behind is our problem, not theirs. Where the hell were we two years ago? Okay. So I don't think we should make them penalized for our inability or lack of oversight when we should have been on top of this and we're not. But I also think, Vince, that, uh, you've got to get your act together because the last person you want on your case is the Anadog County Health Department.
We are aware, yes.
Let me, um. Do you want me to read, do you want to read this? I, I took some, a lot of notes here, so I want to try to make sure that I have what people have talked about here. So, um, first question, special use permit. Will the project have an adverse effect on adjacent lands, the neighborhood, or on the character of the community? First question. In this plan, is the community protected from traffic congestion and complex flooding and excessive soil erosion, unnecessary noise lighting and odors, wasteful energy use, and other forms of pollution? Answer, this is, this is a use that has been existing on this site for some time, so the board is able to observe the actual impact and not speculate, I would say. The use is accessory to the main use of services to the veterans, uh, use on the property, which includes the dog training facility. There is no unusual or increased traffic due to this use, nor are there lighting concerns, wasteful energy, flooding, or excessive soil erosions, or other forms of pollution connected with this use. The facility provides for proper removal of dog waste in the course of training, and the maximum number of dogs at the facility at any one time is limited to, I think you said ten, right?
Yes.
Okay, ten. There was concern raised at the public hearing as to possible odor in connection with this dog training use, however, upon investigation. The dog training facility for which this special permit is being considered is not the source of any odor. If in fact there is an issue, which may upon speculation be related to septic issues, it may be in connection with the main facility not located in this town. General dog barking noise has been raised as a concern. It should be noted that dogs are not trained at the facility, but are merely boarded there and spend little time outdoors. The board has observed the facility and has not heard or observed a level of noise or barking that would exceed the town or elbow levels. Further, there have been no specific complaints, um, to the town code or law enforcement with respect to noise barking at any specific time or place. According to the need for further study of saying at great cost and expense would not be warranted. The board further relies upon the recommendation of the town planning board engineer dated January seventeen, twenty twenty four. And incorporates saying by reference herein, the board finds that the recommendations in that letter and the ordinances in place in the town will serve to address any potential dog noise complaints. Anything on that section?
So the only thing I would say is at the end of the second paragraph, the main facility not located in this town, I think we, we did. From discussion that part of the main facility is located in this town, but its distance is away from this particular building and such that they're not related.
What?
So it, part of it is located in this town, but it's still not related, right?
Well, the septic issues are.
It sounds like it is related.
Well, no, no, the part of this, part of this property, the main facility is, part of it is located in this town. But those issues are entirely separate than this.
It is part of it.
How are you determining the facility? Are you just talking about the building?
The building. We need to clarify.
The building itself is in Madison County, correct?
The building is.
There are, there is a certain building that, uh, that they use for, that's an art building. That is in Anadag County.
Yeah, but the dog kennels in.
Okay, so.
There's a few segments.
Main building in Madison.
The main building rather than the main facility, right? It's the main building, operating building?
Yeah, so, yeah. Main.
It's not the septic, but the operating building.
Well, this house is the only house on the property. It's the only structure in the county of Anadag, in town Manlius.
Isn't it a pool house?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a structure, yeah.
There's a pool.
So there are, and there's sheds and there's other, there's a big barn.
It just was all. If you go back, this was all approved probably ten or twelve years ago by this board. So we have it all on file.
And this is just for the dog.
Yeah, right.
Kennel, focus in on the dog kennel.
I just want to make sure that.
There's, there's some concern about odor and so forth, or, and that's what we're saying is it's related to the other building.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, being in connection with the main, uh, operating building located in, um, not located in this town, but in Madison County. Okay. So that, that's that, um, section. Next, does this plan protect the community from inappropriate design and other matters of scenic and aesthetic significance? Uh, the location of this use, uh, upon the site is remote from adjoining property lines and from the public road. It does not negatively affect. Um, scenic or aesthetic matters. It blends in, uh, the house, uh, in a favorable manner, the use of the house.
Yeah, that's fine.
Remote might be. I mean, it's not remote from the public road. You can see it right there, but it's not.
Uh, relatively sheer, shielded?
Not really, but it's not a problem because it's a house. A house is a bad house.
A house, okay, yeah, it's not.
You know.
Okay. So it's remote from adjoining property lines. Um. I will take out from, at the public road.
Yeah.
I mean, the house is allowed at the zone.
It just looks like a, from the outside, it just looks like a house.
You've got to be careful, um, the language you use because we're talking about. I might be wrong though. It's a fifty-eight acre parcel that this house is located at. So it is somewhat remote. I'm going to see, you see. But, but. The application is for the parcel. The parcel, I think, is fifty-eight acres. It goes way back. So the parcel itself is, is remote.
Parts of it are.
Yeah.
But not the parcel itself.
No, the whole parcel is pretty much remote. There's, there's nine holes.
I get that.
They're back in the woods.
I know, I'm experienced with it.
Yeah, so that is a full, you would write that. Yeah, okay.
But it, it's generally remote from adjoining property lines other than the road.
No, because it backs up to all of, partially.
The house?
No, that's the difference.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's the difference.
Yeah.
I don't. I just think we're talking about that house.
So we're talking about the location of the use. We're talking about the use, right? The location of the use at the house, right?
The location of this use upon the site is remote from adjoining property lines and from the public road.
Well, the public road, you're saying, no, it's not.
It's all springs.
Right, we'll cross that off in public road, but, but from adjoining property lines, it's on fifty-eight acres, right?
I mean, yes, but I think there's just a.
Well, then what's, what's your finding then? What is your finding that you want to say differently there?
I don't think that it's a bad, I don't think it's bad, so. I would say something more like, um, the existing. Scene, you know, if we're talking design, design and aesthetic, design and scenic and aesthetic significance. So I would say something more that it, the existing. Structure and its use. Fits in with the character. Of the adjacent parcels.
It does not negatively affect scenic or aesthetic matters.
Like just come at it from a completely different way.
Yeah, the existing structure that you use fits in with the character of the adjacent parcels. But I think that's a.
Yeah.
And then it does not negatively affect aesthetic matters. Okay, got it. Okay, next question. Does the plan ensure that the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriated orderly development of the district in which it's proposed? The answer is this is a primitive, um. Use in the zoning district with a special permit, so it's in harmony with orderly development of the district provided conditions of the special permit are adhered to. Read that. So determination on the, on the special use permit and we'll go through these conditions. Um, considering the within findings, the board finds that the project is proposed will not have an effect, adverse effect on adjacent lands, the immediate neighborhood, or the character of the community. And the special permit for the premises to be used as a dog training facility. And I'll take out boarding because it's really not. It's really a dog same facility in connection with the use of the premises by Clear Path for Veterans, Inc. for their mission.
Jamie, I think it's a complete opposite. It is a boarding facility. It's not a training facility.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah. I think it's boarding, not training. They do training at the.
The training is down. I mean, no one is, was explained to us.
We'll call it.
Is that accurate?
It is boarding, yeah.
It's boarding.
They're overnight, so.
Facility.
I mean, it's officially called, they call it the puppy development.
We'll call it, boarding facility for.
Right.
We are not boarding facility.
Dogs, service dogs in training.
Yeah, I think the word gets used casually and it takes on a different meaning.
Mm-hmm. But let's just say it's, it's boarding, uh, facility for service dogs in training.
Yeah.
Right?
That sounds good.
So here's the conditions. Um, the special, um, permit shall be granted and in effect for a term of seven years. It is granted to the property owner of Clear Path at Skyridge LLC. For the use of Clear Path for Veterans, Inc. No more than ten dogs will be permitted on the site pursuant to this special permit. Dogs will not be permitted outdoors in the absence of a person supervising saying. Overnight stay of dogs from eight PM to eight AM, is that correct? Eight.
Six AM.
Six AM. Is permitted, um, indoors. Uh, with, indoors only without a human present. In the house, so long as the facility remains accredited by Assistance Dog International. These are service dogs in training. External monitoring when a human is not present must be in place at all times. Um, the facility must comply with the noise ordinances of the town of Manlius. No modifications to the site not specifically approved as part of the site plan approval can be made on the site. Per the Anadog County Planning Board referral of November twenty-one, twenty twenty-three specifically with respect to site. With respect to special permit, the Anadog County Health Department's Bureau of Public Health Engineering must formally accept or approve. Respectively, any existing or proposed septic system to service this property as a condition of this special permit approval. Each of the conditions contained, uh, herein have been carefully considered as a means of addressing concerns raised by the town and residents. And if applicant is in violation of any one or multiple conditions, the planning board reserves the right to withdraw this special use permit at its discretion. Uh, that would be the motion.
Okay, just a clarification. What was the third one again? Sorry.
What was the third one? Dogs, oh, the dogs will not be permitted outdoors in the absence of a person supervising saying.
And then number seven, the no modification, is that the dog going back to the board or no modification?
Um, no, I'm just saying that the, the, um, right, no modifications, not, not approved by the part of the site plan approval.
Got it, perfect.
You, you'll get this.
I know.
After it's.
Yeah.
If we can go back to three, Jamie.
Yeah.
Dogs will not be permitted outdoors in the absence of a person supervising.
Of a person.
Oh, okay, of a person supervising saying. I, I think I'd like to say they got to be on premises. Uh, the supervisor has to be on premises. It's not going to be based on cameras. So dogs will not be permitted outdoors in the absence of.
In person.
Yeah.
Supervising saying in person.
In person, yeah.
Got it.
How would they get in and out without a person?
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody would have let them out before they went home.
That's smart. That's how hard it is.
I'm telling you, I've seen, I've seen things.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So I would like to entertain a motion.
As, as red?
As, I will make the motion. To issue the, okay, issue the special permit as red. Is that all?
Yeah, that's enough.
I'll second that.
Second by Arnie. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There you go.
All right, well, motion carries. So the special permit as red is approved.
The, the site plan, what's.
Now we got the site plan.
Yeah, what's the last date on the site plan?
Uh, December seventh. Uh, October.
It's a separate, I mean.
October tenth.
It's the same.
Oh, October tenth.
Okay.
October tenth. Okay.
So. The, the site, do they want to have any comments on the site plan that need to be changed?
It's just, it's just a septic again, but other than that, I've got.
I didn't see any interest in visiting it. I thought it was wanting to use it, to function automatically. If anything, they might show less remediation.
So each and every finding on the seeker and special permit here to force that forth in this resolution is incorporated by reference herein and further. This board notes that the Anadog County Referral of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three determined as a modification of the following. The Anadog County Health Department's Bureau of Public Health Engineering must formally accept or approve respectively. Any existing or proposed septic system to serve and service this property prior to, well, are we doing it as a condition?
As a condition.
As a condition of municipal approval of a special. As a condition of municipal approval of a special permit and site plan. So I would entertain a motion that the site plan presented and dated October tenth.
Yep.
Is.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve with that condition.
With the condition, with the give up condition of the subject.
Second.
And second by Arnie. Motion made by Rich, second by Arnie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, the site plan. With the condition, and you'll get all that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Folgent Seed Trust at seventy-one ninety-seven East Tennessee Street, Fayetteville. And this is actually going to be for a modification, a renewal, and a new accessory use permit, um, for the one apartment. Um, so the new, for the, a renewal for the first apart, uh, sorry. A new one for the first floor apartment and a renewal for the second floor apartment that we will hopefully be putting into one special, uh, accessory use permit.
Rosemary's online.
All right, so Rosemary is online. Um, she just needs to, okay, Rosemary, can you hear us? We think you're on mute, if you can unmute yourself, we're ready for you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, there you are. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have, uh, received the revised survey with the parking on it from you, so thank you. Um, and we would like to make this all into one permit. It would be cleaner and easier for everybody. Um, we would like to note that, um, your property sign is actually in the New York State right of way, um, but that is not part of the accessory use permit approval process, so we won't be discussing it, but we wanted to let you know that. Um, and I don't know if there's any discussion, but we, we may want to discuss, um, any of the foliage on the property cannot be removed without coming back to us. Um, and then the garages that are on the property and the parking spaces will be used only for the accessory uses that were approved, that would be approved. So, does anyone else have any comment?
No, that's exactly what we talked about.
I had a couple of quick questions about, um, the updated survey, the sort of acting of the site plan in this case, correct? Um, with the addition of the apartment on the first floor, I'm assuming the primary entrance is the door on the parking lot side, is that correct?
Um, it's the front door.
The, the ones back by the.
Doors, one to the back and one at the front. And the apartment upstairs is accessed through the front door.
Okay, what about the new apartment on the first floor?
That will be accessed through the front door and the back door.
The front door of the house, it doesn't look like access. If the front door of the house, it doesn't, where the porch is on the survey, doesn't look like it's connected at all to the new apartment that's being proposed. And I only ask because there's, I do see the two doors for the new apartment, and one of them is back by the washer and dryer, which is at the backside of the building. And the other one is in what's labeled, which I guess would be the east side of the building, which is labeled as the foyer on the floor plan of the new apartment, and it doesn't look like there's any provision for, you know, a landing outside the door or a sidewalk to the parking lot or whatever. I just wondered what the, the plan was for access there. If any, maybe it's just an emergency exit, or, you know, I just, I was kind of curious as to what the, the plan was with that.
Yeah, the, the, the apartment is going to be accessed through the front and the back. Um, I think there's a provision to add an additional door to the back of the house, on the other side of the house, um, as an emergency exit, additional emergency exit, because it does have one emergency exit as of now.
Doug.
Bobby.
Good problem. Doug, let me ask you a question. When we review this for site plan, we're looking at parking, driveways and so on. Isn't that something Tom, we have to deal with when he looks at either a building permit or specific, a, a block of the city? Yeah, so if we, we were to move forward, yeah, and, um, prove the site plan, then Tom would look at that as part of a building permit. And what I'm looking at here is, um, if we were to approve it, we've got sketches here, architectural drawings, so at some point, Tom's going to have to give architectural drawings. Ready to give a building permit here. Right, yeah, okay, just want it all coming together. But that's where Tom's really the guy that's in a position to give the department the, the internal stuff.
So do you care that there's no, what looks like the front door has nothing to get to it?
I mean, it.
See, I, I've always looked at that, I may be wrong.
I think it might not be any of our business, but.
I'm not sure, well. It, I mean, we're, we're a criterion, right? So we can, do we want to say anything about it, and then, and then Tom will have to address it if it's a condition of the accessory use permit. Yeah. I, I.
It just seems odd.
It is that.
Yeah, right.
I put this from the old, old submission, so our.
I'm looking at that.
Yeah, our, our current submission was just to cover, uh, application and then updated survey. And so I went back to our previous stuff that they sent, and then there was, um, some floor plan stuff. So I was curious how everybody got in and out. And then, you know, so I'll throw that on the table. And then my other comment was, you know, we now get the updated survey that has a whole bunch of, um, proposed parking spaces, like fifteen, how many do we need for this? And just having a lot more than necessary matter, and do we want unnecessary, impervious area? Here.
It's already gravel.
That's impervious.
Yeah, it's already gravel.
Right, but do they need all of them?
Oh.
Did you go visit the site?
I've driven, yeah, I didn't pull in.
Yeah.
Drive by, yeah, and I.
Spots in through fifteen are basically grass.
So it's irrelevant, and then why are they labeled on the survey? This is going to be on file.
What they're saying is that there is parking available for that amount.
But why?
It's there.
Yeah.
I think part of, because we were asking for parking to be shown, because remember the survey wasn't reflecting
Yeah, I get that, but.
how the site actually looked.
How many do they need based on square footage of use? And is it fifteen?
Well, if they're already, I am, I mean, this is a survey, so they're there.
It's grass, though, yes, so, like, I just would hate to have us accept this and say there's fifteen parking spaces, but all of a sudden, there's.
It says existing gravel, but I'm saying it's. If you drive, I haven't driven back.
Existing gravel. And then eight through fifteen, it looks like at one point it was gravel, but if you go there, it's all grass over. And I think the bigger concern that we've had over the years hasn't been.
This is a survey.
Hasn't been the, uh, car traffic here. Over the years, the problem that we've had has been truck, trucks, trucking.
Right, and so.
Pool trucks, um, large trailer trucks, tractor trailer trucks. Um, we've been there several times with violations. My understanding with memo from the codes officer is that there are no violations to that extent right now.
Mm-hmm, but if we put in the record a drawing that shows all these parking spaces, and then there's cars parked or trucks parked out there, even if they're not lined up in the spaces, there's things parked there that shouldn't be parked there, but they're in a parking space.
No.
It's not as easy for us to say something about it if it's in a parking space.
Well, one of the things we're saying is that parking spaces can only be used for the approved, basically apartments slash office that's in this building.
Okay, but then the time and money for somebody to go out there and deal with it, if and when to have it.
This is the, this is the existing ground that we have after the permit, is my understanding, right?
Ooh.
Yeah, yeah.
This.
So then Tom.
Sorry, this is the application.
Because if he needs more work to do.
This, this is, this is updated. Right, this is updated, there's existing gravel of proposed parking spaces. Um, we can say that the. I guess the question is, where, where do people park, Rosemary? Where are you proposing, where do you think people will park that are using the, um, the apartments, and of course, the, the office?
Um, there's only one spot, on, one parking spot on the survey that is covered by gravel. Everything else is covered, uh, in gravel, so the occupants of the apartments will have plenty of parking spots, like their vehicle. So the, the spaces eight to fifteen, um, if somebody wants to go back there, they can see that it's gravel, it's not grass.
So then that brings up a valid point, that it's going to be gravel.
So the only, the only space that has gravel on it is parking space, uh, one on the survey.
Because it, it looks like, you know, you've got, how many, was it one spot for every two hundred square foot? Is that what code is? I didn't do the math for a code, because it should have been.
Well, it's, it's for apartments, I think the apartments is.
Is it for bedrooms or? So how many bedrooms are upstairs?
One.
So one bedroom upstairs, two bedrooms downstairs, that's three.
Uh huh.
Plus, how many for your business?
Um, my, my business, at the most, one or two. Uh, it's, it's very quiet, because I'm not always there, it's not actively in use.
What if you already said three?
Not very busy.
See where I'm going with that?
Just the first section, yeah.
Traffic is not heavy for my office use.
So I would put to the warning to discuss the fact that these back cases even need to be here. And, you know, so often in our practice, we are adding impervious area to our community and our drainage, you know, and our water sheds. And sometimes it's nice to look at things and take a step back and say, do we, can we remove any unnecessary, impervious area as part of our work? And if there's no need for that to be back there, and there's not a lot of formal drainage facilities in this area, it might be nice to have that be returned to on.
So, Rosemary, can you, Rosemary, can you confirm parking, uh, uh, on the drawing? Parking spaces eight through fifteen, did you say again that, that is indeed already gravel? Or it is grass?
It's gravel, as far as I know, um. It's always been gravel, I mean, grass was, does grow on the sides of it, which we know in the summertime, but it's designated for parking and it's covered in gravel.
Okay, do you anticipate a need for the, for your office? That you would need more parking than what is up front?
Yes, in the future, in the future, if, if my office, if my practice grows, my practice is small right now, but it, I mean, there's no. It, I don't know that it's going to stay that way forever, so the parking came with the building, um, in the future, if my practice grows, I will definitely need the parking spots.
So, I don't know what you guys want to do.
There's three, if I understand this, there's three bedrooms. And if I had to say reasonable number would be two cars per bedroom.
What?
Got a husband and wife?
In each bedroom?
I'd say most of the week.
Sorry.
If you had a one-bedroom apartment, it could be a husband and wife, they have two cars they got.
Yeah, I think it's like two cars for one bedroom and.
Right, so you got six cars, six cars for the three bedrooms. I'm just guessing.
No, no, I think, I understand the two cars for the one-bedroom apartment, yeah. But not four cars for the two-bedroom apartment.
All right.
Maybe two.
Okay, the bottom line is, the number, there's six parking spaces alongside the building.
Yep.
So is that, the question, I guess, is, is that adequate? And it doesn't sound like from the applicant, it is, they need.
She just said that it was.
Yeah, it is now, it is now.
She said she has one, possibly two sometimes. And then I said, let's throw in a third, and you got your grant.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering.
Well, here's the question, though, are you gonna, are you gonna request a be resolved to.
Yeah. Yeah. I would like to do that, but what do you think, Doug?
Sounds fine to me.
I didn't, I didn't get the question.
Sounds like a while.
Yeah, I think, and given the history with the parking stuff, like, so we were, you know, and this is more of a question for.
Yeah, I really. I think we, if we have it as a condition that the parking, I mean, if no one's parking there and nothing is parked there.
And there's a history of people.
It may eventually, if the grass grows, um, but I think the parking up front could be the, the parking, but, um, leave the back as is for now, but that, that those, any parking on the site will only be used for the approved use of the apartments or the office.
So, yes.
I think it's creating work for home enforcement.
Well, who else is going to comment?
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't, I think that if it's not being used and there's no plan to have it be used, it should be returned to pervious servicing. We are always taking.
I don't, I don't know that there's a chance for it not to be used, and I've never heard of somebody's property just being taken like that. Um, you know, like I said, I don't know, for now, the practice is, you know, small and traffic is not high, but who's to say what my need will be in the future? I feel extremely disturbed by the idea that the town is about to take parts of the land. I just, I don't understand it, just because, you know, there are parking spaces there now that are not, are being actively used. Um, it, I, I don't, I don't think that warrants the town to take parts of the land.
Well, it's.
Uh, just in case the practice grows or there's a need for, who knows, I might apply for something in the future that requires additional parking.
That, I, I guess, how do I suggest, we don't usually do this, special use permits usually go for seven years. Maybe we grant a three-year, four-year.
She thinks her business is going to grow, which she might be more lucky. She helps come back anyway.
Yeah.
On the other permit.
Yes, yeah.
What, 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 what's the timeframe on the other permit?
Um, it's good right now until twenty-seven.
So what, one of the proposals was to, um, go ahead and, and bring all, there's a, there's currently a spe, a, a special use permit for what we said?
The law office.
For the law office, and to go ahead and, and confirm and, and reaffirm a special use permit for the law office and this use, all which will be good for seven years, because right now.
Accessory.
It's accessory use permit.
And I guess what I'm saying is maybe we should consider to do it for three or four. I mean, there's no law that says we have to do it for seven.
Well, that, that's been our practice.
Yeah, why do you want to do it for three or four?
To find out when the parking needs are in this one area, and if we say, come back if you. To find out when the parking needs are in this one area, and if we say, come back if you need bad parking or more parking.
Yeah, I feel like that's the way that, I mean, the site, that's the site, the way it is now, I mean, if she, if she wants to, if she wants to add on to her uses, she'd have to come back to us anyway. And she's saying she might possibly add more parking, and if she does in the future and changes the use, she'd have to come back.
Then we got to stipulate how much parking we're approving at this point. If we're approving seven parking spaces, with this.
So we could approve the seven parking spaces, but leave the back as is, but not indicated for parking.
Then it should not be shown on the survey.
Well, the, the existing gravel.
It's existing.
Yeah.
Don't strike it, don't strike it as parking spaces.
Why don't we do a, do a boot chart? Put the eight through fifteen in banked parking. Take the one through seven, or one through six, they're there. And leave the others for some future discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think we have to, again, I, I think we're trying to aggro manage the business here.
I mean, the other thing is, when you look at this work wire, and maybe the applicant could tell us what the law space area looks like, it no longer has any restrooms. No, what? The law office space, oh. Oh, oh. And I'm not sure that was for us. I, I think that's, again, I, I refer back to Tom, that's, you know, you don't get to see them all if you don't have a bathroom.
Okay. Can you, I mean, can we?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Can you ask that question to the applicant? I'm not, I'm not looking at what you're, I don't know what you're looking at, so.
Rosemary, is there a bathroom in your office?
Just go, go to the, uh.
Separate from the apartments?
Yeah, the, the.
They're separate from the apartments?
Yes.
We were trying to, I, we're, I guess we're not seeing it on the plans that you had submitted before, back in December. Do you know offhand where it shows that?
The, the plan, the plan that was submitted in December is for the new apartment, and that's why it's not showing anything that's.
Okay.
This thing.
Yeah, Doug, where?
The office has always had a bathroom for, you know, to be used by people, you know, at the office, so because we didn't draw a new plan for the office, that's why I'm missing it on the plan, but it's there.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Doug?
Yeah.
So we don't have the plan for the office, because that wasn't new.
It just has existing space to remain from what I can see.
Yeah, it's just for.
They just didn't.
Kind of a black hole.
They didn't populate it.
Well.
Which is really none of our business what's going on there, it's already approved. Right? Yeah, this is, it's already approved, yes.
The accessory use is running out, so that's why it went back to us. That's your law office, the apartments are back in front of us. The other way around?
We were, we were going to combine it to make it easier for Lisa and for Rosemary.
Correct.
Um, but they're not running out, they were, we're just coming back for one renewal and one new.
Right.
So the renewal is for the second floor apartment, the new is for the first floor, the office is not approved renewal. But we were going to, correct, tie it all up.
Tie it all together.
Yeah.
But I, I really think that's something Tom has to look at.
So would, would it, would the motion be, let's start with the basics of it.
Mm hmm.
Approve the accessory use permit for the first floor apartment and the second floor apartment, and reaffirm the accessory use permit of the law office for a period of seven years total from the date today. Okay, that's part one. With the following conditions. And what are the conditions? Right, so, um, I think you had some.
So we had possibly not removing any of the foliage on the property. Um, and then, again, that the garages and the parking spaces that we are approving, um, will be used only for the accessory uses, no other uses.
What about and her, her law office as well?
Well, that's.
But that's, it's an accessory use, yeah, it's got the accessory uses approved. And no other uses. And, um, the, the parking, the proposed parking, right? Is shown on the plan. What's the, what's the?
I think, I think what Valerie just said about the garages should be expanded to driveways and parking spaces.
Garage parking spaces and driveways.
Okay.
Will only be used to support the.
Uh huh. For support of, okay. Of the accessory uses approved and no other uses. Okay. So now we're on the, the parking. Do you have a proposal for that, Valerie?
Um, well, like I said a little bit ago, um, I would say that we incorporate the parking in the front of the property, so the spaces one through seven, and maybe like, Arnie mentioned.
Is there parking space one? I don't see it.
Yeah, it's the very beginning.
It's there.
Yeah.
Oh, they're sideways.
Parking spaces. Or even two, I think Rosemary said that one is grass, so if that's difficult, maybe she only needs two through seven, it doesn't need to make one a space. Right, Rosemary, didn't you say one is grass right now?
Yeah, the first one is grass.
Yeah, so we, you could do two through seven, that is already existing gravel, never mind one. And then.
Are approved.
Yeah, are approved, and then Arnie was, like, Arnie suggested that we bank, the others can be banked for any, for possible future use.
What if we say that the existing gravel shown as proposed.
Two through seven.
Eight, eight through fifteen?
Uh huh.
Eight through fifteen uh, may remain gravel. Uh, but, um, our reserved parking for the, for the accessory use only.
Mm hmm. Yes.
Accessory uses only.
I would even say number one doesn't count.
Yeah, yeah, we're taking up, yeah.
We'll, we'll confirm. Parking space number one, parking space labeled, uh, number one. It is not approved.
Yeah, that still gives two for one apartment. Two for another, two for the office. And the bank.
Was there any, anything else?
Anything else? Anybody have it?
I want to move that as, put together, I, you have done. Lisa, have you got all that?
I've got most of it, if you have to.
Jamie will fill in the blanks.
As I just stated.
Okay, Arnie, motion made by Arnie.
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, Rosemary, we've got all three of your accessory use permits from a date of today for seven years. And we mentioned the parking, we can, we'll get this, we'll, we'll get it to you in writing.
Uh huh. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Well, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay. There's no other business, so I would entertain a motion.
Would you, I'll say.
Second by Arnie, all in favor? All aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Rosemary.